Ready?
Yes.
Good. Box meeting orders, seven o'clock.
There's a rubber band on the end of that. So.
Temporary flag holder for tonight. As we get this new beautiful addition dialed in.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's taking over the job.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the name of our beloved British friends, our nation, our God, and the little liberty of the Constitution.
How big do you think that is?
Too big.
It's only a few feet.
Yes.
It was going to be good. Two days ago, we don't have today. Yep. We wouldn't have changed that.
Very good, right? So. All right. Please for Mike to rejoin us.
I can't hold it there.
You all would have died out.
I know I would have died out, I know.
All right. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is last month's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from last month, December 17th, 2024. Are there any comments or edits that need to be made to tonight's agenda or the meeting minutes from last month? Okay. Now hearing anything, did I get a motion to approve the agenda, tonight's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from December 17th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda and the meeting minutes of December 17th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Carry. Okay. The first item on tonight's agenda would be citizen comments. This is a time in which citizens wishing to address a planning commission on business, on any business other than tonight's agenda items. So at this point, do you have anybody that, any citizens that would like to address the board? Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Communications. Don't have any communications other than one listed here. So we will start with unfinished business. First item on unfinished business is the special land use for 9422, which I would be recusing myself for so that I can present it to the board.
All right, this is unfinished business for the public hearing, continue from December 7th, 2024 meeting for a special I am first for ZL services, John Saccolani, and the applicant. Meeting. Public, what's the area of that?
The public, the public hearing was originally opened last month in December.
Seventeenth.
Because we didn't have a forum. The planning commission could not make a decision on it or really move forward with it, so today is the meeting where I should move forward with it. We did collect public comments at the last meeting and we should continue to have public comments addressed that are taken at this meeting as well.
So you should start at first in the public?
Well, I can do my review or either Jonathan present, I can do my review, or can do my review, and Jonathan present. And then after that presentation, if the planning commission makes a deliberation, that's when maybe one public comment should be taken.
All right. Well, John, you want to open up there, then what up Karen, go after you there.
Okay, so as stated, my name is John Saccolani with ZL Services here tonight to request approval of a special land use for across the neighborhood. Crushed concrete, recycled concrete in our property, in that 422, where it's the highway. And as we stated last time, there was a couple of, a couple of things that Karen had found in her initial review that we addressed. The first one is the licensing required by the state of Michigan. We will provide that to the township once we ultimately hire a contractor. Right now, we're still up in the air with a contractor because the kind of couple of contractors that we had talked about doing this project with have not given us a final answer until they find out what type of special stipulations may be put in place by the board. So we haven't been able to dial in pricing, so we haven't been able to hire a contractor yet, but once we do and before we start their licensing, we'll be providing to the township for their mobile operation. We have added the parking, which means the second point in the ordinance. The third point in the ordinance states that some type of fence or barrier blockage needs to be in place between us and the neighboring properties. Because this is a mobile operation and a temporary use situation, we propose to rent two 40-foot shipping containers that will be used for temporary screening. Basically, essentially what we're going to use them for is to create a 10-foot-high, 80-foot-long temporary wall. So the crushing operation will happen on the backside of that wall, so that wall provides some type of screening, noise, blockage towards the residential parcels to our west. Those containers will be used for nothing more than just building a temporary wall. As soon as we're done with this operation, they will be moved out. We're going to rent those or possibly the contractor we're talking about owns a few that we may be able to use, but these aren't going to live there forever, nobody wants them there, so they will be gone as soon as we're done. The fourth point, setback requirements. So based on where we're going to perform the operation, we meet all setback requirements around the property. Fifth, fifth point here, Karen did mention that industrial uses adjacent to agricultural residential shelter by a 25-foot, 25-foot wide with a three-foot high berm adjacent to the property line. Type C required trees under 40 feet and the requirement there. So I mean, we have plenty of material onsite, dirt, topsoil that's going to be screened in the future that we could easily create this berm with. Put a couple of trees in it. It is what it is, we'll do it. It's all going to be temporary, because like I said, the dirt that we would use to build this berm, we're not going to, it's basically going to be recycled and used for filter, topsoil, things like that, but we have it, we can use it to meet this requirement as needed, it's not a problem. Number six, the applicant, we'll have a water truck onsite. We have city water, so we have no problem, you know, using a water truck to mitigate dust. Also, we want to plan to do this as soon as possible, February, March timeframe, in the hopes that, you know, with some snow and that type of thing, you know, that will help keep the dust down too, or not in the heat of the dry season, particularly during the middle of the year. The seventh point in the ordinance talks about hazardous materials, hazardous substances. That doesn't apply here. There's no hazardous substances that are part of this operation. The eighth point provides some general guidelines for operation. We plan to do this no more than Monday through Friday, eight to five. We will not be doing any crushing on the weekends. We will not be doing any crushing outside of those hours. It's not an issue for us. And then the ninth point is that direct access to a pay grow, which we do. I think with that being said, we have the points in the ordinance covered. I would take it back to Karen and the board for any questions.
So again, this is a special land use review for this temporary concrete crushing mobile service that the applicant is proposing to do. The planning commission should understand that, you know, in their decision-making, granting this, if any conditions are applied or not, if no conditions are applied, in theory, the applicant can do this operation so long as they are above the terms that they say that they immediately require. So when the applicant says that the operation would be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., you know, I believe in your original proposal, you said it was going to be a matter of weeks. Is that, I guess, is that still the plan? Or if you are granted this, would it be more frequent? Are you anticipating this would be, I don't know, your kind of thing, twice of your kind of thing? What's the plan?
Projected end date?
Our anticipation will be once a year and we're going to try to limit to eight weeks.
If you get approval, are you going to start right away?
As quickly as we can. I mean, like I said, certainly I have to finalize some things with a contractor and get that in, but you know, right now, most contractors are slow pack, so that really shouldn't be an issue. Get somebody in there, get it going. We want to be done by April 1st. So if we, you know, if we can get approval and get everything set up within the next couple of weeks, it gives us pretty much all February, March to get this done, which we don't expect any reason why we couldn't.
So you have, because I wasn't here last time, you have two containers, so you're just going to, when you crush, the sound hits that, or it breaks that, correct?
That's, that's the thought, yeah.
Would you say the same? Are you planning on like the same two months every year or again later in the year or?
We, at this point, with, you know, pushback from the community and just everything that has gone into this, we're not really sure if we're going to do it again next year, but at this point, we have to do it at least once to be able to get this material out of our yard. We're working on trying to work out a partnership with another local yard that we could take our material there and have them crush it for us, so that we don't have to go to our place, but at the minimum, we have to at least do this one time to get the material out of our yard.
And if the supplier of not, if you did do it a second time, and then the supplier of the machine changes, which is, I'm sure enough, cheap to get the machine, would the licensing, could we require the licensing to be changed if that changes? Like how would we, do we, how does that?
Yeah, each, each mobile crushing operation holds their own license. So if we did, if we did, and if we did in fact do this again in the future and use a different company, then they would provide their.
As their own insurance and everything.
Correct. And these companies are all licensed through the state of Michigan as well as Eagle, which is environmental, Great Lakes authority or something, and monitors all of the operations from dust to noise to pollution. I mean, the Eagle is very heavily regulated, these guys are.
How close are the, the neighboring residences to the property line?
The closest house to the back of our property line is about 900 feet.
Because from what I understand, these things are extremely loud, like concert loud.
Yeah, I mean, there's different styles of crushers. There's what's called jaw crusher, impact crusher. Impact crushers are much louder. We learned that last year when we did this, so we're looking at only contractors or companies that uses a jaw crusher, because it is a quieter operation. I mean, I can sit here and tell everybody that this is like a long one, right?
Right.
You're still crushing concrete at the end of the day, but it is a different style and it is quieter than other options.
I guess, again, I just want to say, you know, the standards that are here in the ordinance, I would say were probably written considering that this, the standards here are for junk yards, auto scavenging, recycling operations, thinking that this is the home spot for this business. The applicant is doing this temporarily, so just, it's a keep that in mind while you're coming with your decision, because that might impact, again, again, this is a special land use, so if you want to place any specific conditions, because this is a unique temporary situation, consider that in whatever decision you do the second time.
Yeah, I'm not particularly concerned about, you know, three-foot-high berm, isn't going to do anything for dust or noise to the neighbors' complaints.
But that would have to be there. We can't, I said, you can't necessarily deviate from what the regulations are set up here, but if there was something like, for instance, you know, like you say, like for the licensing information, if he chooses to do, do that again, that information should be updated with the township, because, you know, this is a, essentially a contracting service that's coming in temporarily. So something like that, like the planning commission may want to consider.
So you're saying we can't deviate from that because of the ordinance?
Correct.
The ordinance is set up.
I think the ordinance says it's got to be a minimum.
It's got, it has to be, if I am saying, you know, you consider that, you know, this is, this is something that it's not, it's.
That's despite of wasting money though, for him to do that, just doing the other stuff, so, I mean, you know, what?
Like where I'm coming from, if, if this were to be approved and if I was a neighbor, I could really care less if there's a three-foot berm with some trees on top of it, if we were to make him put, enclose that entire area for shipping containers, well, that's going to do a little bit more to, to, I mean, we're dealing with an ordinance that you just said isn't even directed towards this operation.
Well, it is. I'm just letting you know that the operation is temporary, because that can create a unique situation. Think about, because this is a special land use, so the planning commission cannot apply special conditions to this, unlike a typical site plan review, where, you know, you can't add extra stipulations.
Are those containers stacked well down? Because, yeah, he's right. If you could just get a little higher, right, so whatever goes over now really bounces into that thing.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, they're kind of tall, some of them, if we think.
You have a 20-foot wall, right? That's huge.
I mean, I'm just sitting here, we have a gentleman that has a business, trying to run a business, he's telling us that he wants to be done by April 1st, and it's just a temporary deal, doesn't sound like he wants to go through all this again, which in fact, if he does, he's got to come to us again. I'm just trying to figure out a way where all the parties can walk away able to swallow.
Well, I'd say that's something we have to consider. I would say typically with a special land use, once that's used as granted, that runs with the, so long as the applicant's there, depending what conditions the planning commission chooses or not, or chooses to put on it or not. In theory, if this were to get approved and he says, I'm, I would like to do this Monday through Friday, eight to five, for about eight weeks a year, that's something that could happen annually. It's up to the planning commission to.
Well, if we, if we, one approval, that's, that can happen anyway.
That could. So long as it's following those same, those same parameters, those same parameters, and then, you know, this isn't necessarily something, unless the planning commission says this is going to get reviewed on an annual basis, so long as, continually following the same parameters, following.
I bet you question would move it out to somewhere else, though, so, I don't know. I'll take it, we do, just come back. You get always moved out to another choice next year.
Yeah, like I said, we're open to try and find a better solution, but at the minimum, we got to live with what we got now.
And you think all that can be moved in for eight weeks?
I think so, yeah. Got some conversations with the contractors that we've talked to, you know.
Now, how far can we go with it? Can you charge, six, six, you said April 1st. Can you charge a bounty if it's not done April 1st?
That would be, that would end up, end up becoming a code issue, because that wasn't part of what the agreement was for.
So he would just say.
And if you apply those, if the conditions were, you're only operating Monday through Friday, eight to five, once a year for an eight-week period, if that is a condition that the planning commission chooses to place on a special land use, if it were to approve it, then following outside of that would become a.
You, you said once a year, but I don't think that's, that's not the.
I'm saying that's the, the applicant said that that's what their plan was.
What's the price difference, John?
Sorry, what?
If you moved it out compared to doing it on your own property, what's the price difference? Be a thing.
If we, if we're forced to move out, it will cover, it's going to become a permanent burden, it's, there's no cost-effective way, it would cost me tens of thousands of dollars moving that by truck.
For next year.
Oh, for.
Compared to doing it, how you're doing it out, compared.
Right, so what we would do next year is instead of actually bringing it to our yard, we would take it right to somewhere else, and we would stockpile the material in someone else's yard that has a full-time year of operation.
Would it be cheaper, is it better, or is it?
Oh, it's cheaper. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have to be here, I don't have to hire a contractor to come into my yard, I just deliver, I just take all the material that we're trucking anyways, instead of bringing it to my yard, I bring it somewhere else, dump it in a pile there, and then when they're ready to get into our pile, they just switch over, they crush their own for, for a certain amount of time, and then once we bring them enough, then they would switch over and crush ours.
Right. Seems like we should have learned that from last year, right?
Well, see, the problem last year is we only got probably 30, maybe 40% through the pile. We never finished the job last year. So we had what was left over from last year plus what we stopped on this year, because we already had the pile started.
Okay, so I have a question. If, if the weather, if the weather gets really lousy, I mean, if there's a lot of ice, you know, that's the time of the year, you would probably need more time. You just never know.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, of course, weather could play, you know, play a tricky part in a situation like this, but the colder weather is actually better for us, because once it starts to get warmer, the material starts to get clogged in the machine a little bit more, so, weather, weather is actually a benefit. I mean, obviously, this week's weather is not very good for us, minus zero, nothing where it works well in those temperatures.
I'm thinking more of ice and rain and that kind of thing.
They'd still be working during that time?
Yeah. Again, rain actually helps, because it helps mitigate dust.
Well, that's true.
Dust out. So, yeah, and this machine, it can run in rain.
I have a question, just because I'm new here. Is this something you went through last year already?
No, so last year, we were unaware that this was, was the process to do this. We, we were under the assumption that we're in an industrial district, we know other, you know, operations similar to this in the industrial district, so we hired a contractor and started doing it.
Okay.
And then we got some complaints from residents, and so we stopped.
Yeah. A lot of residents.
Right.
So in essence, it can be from the planning committee, it could be approved for a one day of that, let's say it's a matter of that, you know, it's not a matter of that, a one day, or one week, a two-month, a one-year. You could say, okay, you can do it for one year, two days, and that's it. We can put them stipulations on a special land use, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's the, okay. Irregardless of what the terms and the special permits are.
Can we open this up to public comment right now, so you can hear what the residents have to say?
I have a question, only because I just put you all the information that's in front of you. Number three, that refers to the containers, if I understand correctly, is not to be confused with the red comments on number five. Those requirements must be met regardless of, is that correct, Karen?
In addition to.
All storage, dismayed by similar activities, shall be conducted within a fully enclosed building or shall be screened from view by a minimum of eight-foot-high saw, eight-foot-high solid fence or wall, not less than the height of the material being stored. No storage shall be permitted outside of boundaries of the building or fence. The fence or wall shall be constructed of materials approved by the planning commission as to your appearance, their building, and effectiveness as an obscuring or screen of property. And so the applicant will install two shipping containers, 10 feet high, 10 feet high by 80 feet length, placed 40 feet from the property line to create screening on the west side of the property.
I think what Brett was asking though, is even with the shipping containers, we still have to meet the requirement in number five.
The numbers, the number five, that requirement. Because Dan made the comment, well, it wouldn't matter to me if he had.
Right, with that, I was saying, which was my bringing back to the, all these standards have to be applied at a minimum to this use, so that includes both whatever fencing material plus the land use.
Yeah, I was a little saying that there's no point in really doing that, and there is. What he wants to do is, there's no point. If you could make him do something else.
But there is no other option other than what you have to write. Is that correct?
So since it's a special land use, the planning commission has the ability to apply extra conditions that they think would be reasonable to dissipate, you know, or to help neighboring properties feel the impact less.
And you're saying we can't waive that condition?
No, no, the planning commission can't waive these conditions. These are not optional.
John, would you have a problem bringing in actually two shipping containers and stacking them 20 feet high, 80 feet long, to give extra protection from the neighbors on the west side of the yard?
That's what's required, no?
No?
We'll do whatever we have to, get rid of this pile. I mean, that's basically what we're, we want to get rid of it, be done with it, so that we don't have to keep fighting battles.
And then also with the mobile thing, are you going to let the city know about the footprint of it, the DBs it's making, how much loud it is, you know, to be kind of.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we can do all that too, I don't have a problem with providing additional information once all that, just style that with the contractor.
If you don't want that, you know, you bring a mobile, and I think it's sticking up 100 feet up in the air, you know.
No.
That mobile that we thought was only 30 or 20 feet up in the air, you know, it's a big difference.
Well, last, last month, I provided a couple of pictures to the board of what the machine looks like. It, it's, it's a machine that can be towed down the road, so, I mean, with that being said, that's, you know, the legal road height is 13.6. You know, the length of it is, you know, no more than 50 feet long, so.
Karen, can we open it up for the public comment real quick and get some feedback from the public? Does that like open up to the public? Come on up.
My name is Andrew Benny, 5864, Chirp River. I live across the street. The gentleman that's worse off than I am, and this gentleman here, is 900 feet in the house, okay? Picture this, have you ever lived, actually, have anybody been by there to see the distance of everybody? You in there? Have you guys been there?
No.
I live across the street, okay, and I can hear, if he turns it on, I can hear it in the garage. He's done it three times. Now, you guys are making, trying to come up with an idea to eliminate this, this concrete. Him being the chairperson, he should have known what he had been before he fired the machine up. Another thing, don't you think you could be allowed to consider to the citizens that got me on the bad side of the.
Was he, when you say that, was he running the machine, or just, he just fired it off?
I was here three times in '24.
I'm assuming the last in December, but I had.
The first time, and then the second time, the third time. It was three times, and you all knew about it.
Wow.
And kept on, yeah, but you kept letting it happen, you knew what, what was going on, and everybody kept letting it do it. And now we're here to get a variant for him to take and dispose of it. Well, him being the chairperson, don't you think he should have known better before he even started the project, to make sure everything was okay?
Well.
Well, he wasn't even a part of this war the first time.
Okay, but we're, it's supposed. Okay, but we're, it's supposed to be heavy industrial, not industrial. That's another thing, state of Michigan verifies it has to be heavy industrial. Oh, why church here, you're walking property across the street and built on it, wouldn't start it here. It has.
It's either light industrial or heavy industrial.
The township just has the. That's all the township has to do.
It has, it has, heavy industrial.
To crush the concrete.
The crushed concrete. Why do you think church, church here is a whole property across the street from twenty-six there, and in front of it, he couldn't get one of his board and did the same thing. I'm going to put a rock crusher there, he went over on the other side of Church Road and put it up there. Now, you can come to my house and you can hear that machine running, the conveyor belts, really conveyor belts, non-stop going. But in his defense, we have the woods around here, you guys don't know that echo that comes through that woods? And we got to sit there and doing his rear, rear part, I say, let it haul it, haul it in.
Don't you think the, the forty foot or thirty foot will block a lot of that sound?
Wish if it makes it worse, don't it? Wish if it makes it worse, but the echo from the containers up there, then what are you going to do, keep going?
But it's a different machinery than that.
You don't know what machines that go in there, right, look at, there ain't no damn rock crushers that quieter than one than the, than the other. Go look at Rosos and church ears and see how loud they are, and then go back and see what's going to be like us listening to it. We have a problem because I'm serious, that, that, that noise is terrible from there. In fact, the one excavator you got up there, we can hear it, we can see it on top of the pile, I can sit in my living room, look out the window, see an excavator on top of the pile. That's how high the pile is right now.
Well, I live on Bethue and I can hear all the people with the dump too, right?
Yeah, I'm.
Same, it's the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, well, you know, I'd have to go to Lenox Township and try to get them to stop them to dump.
Good luck with that.
Good luck with that.
That's their big thing.
But we're in a closed area here, and him being the chairperson, he should have known better than before he started this project. And kept following, he quit, he quit, kept following the, the material in, knowing that he, they shut it down three times.
Yeah, last year when he did it and when you guys all came in, he did shut down, did he or did he not?
Yes, he shut down.
Now, we're just trying to find another way of. We're trying to find another way of rounding it so you can finish up this stuff and do it, I mean, he's a business guy, I mean, I understand.
I understand, but he knew being chairperson what was going on.
Let her go, let her go.
Okay, I'll, I'll let that go, but I'm telling you, it has to be heavy industrial to do it. Now, you couldn't check in and do it and see if I'm right or wrong, nobody on the board is saying I'm wrong. Really, I, I, you need to check.
Shouldn't say light industrial or heavy industrial, shouldn't say industrial, I guarantee you that, should say one or the other, not that that's the plan.
Yes, that's what I kept bringing up the other couple of times, you need to put, we're, really, heavy industrial or industrial.
Exactly, I always thought it was heavy industrial.
No, that's, that's industrial.
I know, there's really, if you go to any other township, it's light industrial or heavy industrial, there's no such thing as just, it might be industrial park, but it's, it's either light or.
It may be different because the opposite side of the road is heavy, heavy industrial.
Yeah, that's because the opposite, right, is a different county and that's on the label, right?
Township on that side of the road.
We're not labeling.
Yeah, no, we don't have, no, heavy industrial in Castle, so, really, that should be up. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Dennis, I'm in the eighty-three-sixth of this neighborhood, and I, I got some questions. Originally when this all started, it lasted for the three times, and then when we came in, um, John, I, I think you agreed that we were going to have somebody come in, I know Steve, Mr. Stevens, whatever, he, uh, he said, you guys are going to bring somebody in here and show us how loud this stuff was. And, uh, that never happened, I don't know whatever happened with that. Nobody ever showed up to show us what they had and how quiet this was going to be this time, but, uh, it's pretty loud, I will say that. I could, I know John is a up and up guy, I think, and, and I know he wants to get rid of this stuff, but I don't think I want to listen to this every year, every two months out of the year.
Well, I'm not in for every year, right, so I'm not in for every year, period.
And, uh, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what we can do about it, but, uh, if you can get a really quiet one in here and get it out of here in a month, do it in March. And I'd be happy with that, and, and I know you can take it somewhere, I'm sure Roso or this other guy over there will probably help you out, I, I would hope that he would help you. Roso's a pretty good guy, I know him real well, I don't know the other people, we have a pretty big operation over there, we got plenty of room.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, we're, we're looking at other options for, for the future, but at the minimum right now, we just got to get this out of, out of the yard that we have.
And if, and if you start it, are you going to bring any more crap while you're doing it?
No, I mean, we're not adding to the pile, we're, we're not even, I mean, we're still working, but that part, that activity, uh, what we do on a daily basis isn't, won't pick up again until the spring. So we, I mean, the goal is to be done and all cleaned up before we even start trucking the material in like that.
Maybe you're not going to truck it in there, you're going to truck it over to somebody else's.
Then sorry, yeah, that's, that's the plan, is to find somewhere else to take it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Does anybody else in Castle Township or Rock? I know if you're talking about different places, is there anybody else in Castle that can shop Rock at this date and point?
No.
Township.
Unless it's at the other end near Richmond, I don't think there's anybody.
I wasn't sure if anybody, permanent to, but does anybody do it, just got to.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what kind of, I don't know any of them before, but that thing is really loud. I, I haven't.
I have, I have a video on my phone of, of a pressure running.
But what is that pressure?
It, it's, it could be because it's from a yard where one of the contractors that we talked to, um, if we are using that contractor, it would be that same machine, and it's kind of subjective because it's on my phone and it's, you know, the volume of my phone, but.
Turn it up and down.
Correct. So as a special use, it could be approved as a, we're gonna, let's just. Eight weeks hypothetically, eight weeks, one time only, if he chooses to ever do it again, he's going to be standing right here again.
Give him a April 1st cutoff date, he cannot keep producing anything after April 1st, whether he's dumped that pile or not, given the stipulations, so kind of set it up on the neighbors so we can be one and done with this, so we don't have this coming up in the future.
That's an option the planning permission.
What do you guys think about that?
And then have, have the.
And the licensing.
Yes, Karen?
If, if you guys would like to close the public comment period, if you're cool. I don't know if you guys are ready to use any of us.
Is there anybody else who wants to make a public comment about this? No, all right, I'd like to, I'll close out the public hearing for the, um, zero on special land use.
I'll second you.
All in favor?
Aye. So, so you would, you would stack up two containers, that would be twenty, twenty feet?
That would be.
We didn't know that's going to work, I mean.
They would have.
I mean, it's, it's just slow, but, but, what about the echo, it does reverse effect, we got to stop, we're done.
I'm sure if you went over there and you told John that this is making a reverse effect when you take this down, he can come here and something could be done.
Then why three times?
Then, then, then he's got to go through, get rid of all the crap, I mean, somebody's got to be able to prove it.
I mean, if, the way it reads right now, he can sit that excavator on top of that concrete pile, pick up a bunch of concrete, and this is paying a guy eight hours a day to sit there and dump it here around. And if he wants to, he doesn't want to work with people, he's here to work with people.
I, I hear.
I, I, and he's just.
So I don't want to.
I understand that point.
And why can't I get his stuff done?
I understand your point, I don't think that.
I don't want to. I don't think you guys are visiting, you're not visiting the point here, really.
I'm listening to somebody that's complaining about his rock crushing and the other rock crushers that are on the road that you can also hear. I mean, it just sounds to me like you're not. I'm just saying you're not going to be happy until they're all shut down.
No, sure.
More than a quarter mile.
But he's saying.
This is in our backyard, it's a quarter mile away, that's where I'm trying to get at, that it's supposed to be there, okay, you can hear it, he's in our backyard. That's what, that's what I'm saying, I'm not condoning them down there, right?
I, I think it's a long way.
We barely see it, it's a long way away, we're nine hundred feet from them.
Yep, absolutely.
Hey, okay, sorry.
Do you know how much concrete there, how much, how long it's really going to take? That guy that owns the rock crusher should be able to tell you how long it's going to take to get rid of that pile.
He estimated, he estimated six weeks, that's why we're asking for eight, just in case we have some weather delays or some other reason why we can't get it done, and his projected six weeks.
All right, sorry guys, but the public comment's closed, I apologize.
I wish the other neighbors were here. They work.
John's trying to do everything he can to.
Anybody, any thoughts up here?
We're thinking.
No, I like the twenty feet high, I like the four one, cut it off, you know, start at whatever, two one, whatever, four one, cut it off, period. One time deal, move it somewhere else next year. And if there's some kind of issue, John, that, that this is actually worse, that these guys are hitting it worse, then we need to maybe try to come up with an alternative plan.
Wasn't there, the last time you guys came, two meetings ago, wasn't there talk of the decimal level on the decimal meter? About exceeding and testing that to make sure that it wasn't?
Yeah, that's what he was doing.
We talked about, but I haven't found any, anywhere the ordinance or gives a specific decimal level or a certain amount of feet from the machine, so, I mean, if, if that's something that we need to look at, I don't have a problem with that, this wouldn't even need, need, need to know the details.
Exactly, yes, I'll, I'll check, but I believe, um, it'd be in the noise ordinance.
Probably really good if you look at it, if it's super loud or if it's reverberating and it's going worse than these guys, then we got to maybe, you know, I don't know what the deal is.
Yeah, I mean, whatever we can do, I'm sure there's, you know, other alternative solutions, and this seemed like the easiest, fastest way to, to, to achieve, you know, meeting the requirements. But, I mean, we're, we're open to ideas, if somebody's got a different idea.
So industrial district at the property line, the decimal level shall not exceed seventy, I suppose.
I think rock crushers tend to be a little over a hundred, but every time they get to a somebody else's house.
It's about surprise.
But that would be the other side of the container, right? I guess my concern with the containers, it says it's going to bounce the sound back, or is it going to sound like someone beating on a snare drum or the rock crusher?
Well, I raise that mileage a lot, and we have those canisters that go down the track that can muffle the sound for barriers for the residents in my land, and it seems to work pretty well there. So I don't know if it'd be different with a rock crusher than a, than a hardcore powered car, so, just a thought.
Yeah, I have the experience.
We have some of that, I agree. Muffle the sound, that's the same problem, they want to shut the tracks down because of the problems of the cars, but they, they put things like what he's talking about, it muffled it to an extent, wouldn't say it kept it clear, but it did help to a, you know, to an extent.
Right. The idea is maybe plant trees around their property at a certain point, keep them off, leaves them be going down, right?
No, we, I mean, we have a good tree line around most of the property at the stands.
But this helps with dust, I mean, the, the wind goes to the west.
Right, so naturally the wind is.
Air from the west would be a huge help just in the summertime.
Naturally, the wind is blowing a thousand feet from residential areas, yeah, we're to the east like them, so when the wind blows from, from west to east like it typically does, it's blowing away from the houses. I mean, from my experience and, and watching them operate last year, I don't think the dust was any worse than driving down a dirt road, there's all these houses in this area around a dirt road. I think, you know, they put fresh gravel down, and they grade it and all that, and I think it's far dustier than running this machine.
Right, it is pretty dusty, even driving here today was pretty dusty.
Well, I'll make a motion. So I make a motion that we approve the special land use with numerous conditions, which I'm going to have to list with maybe some assistance. Number one, a copy of the license prior to any, and any, anything happening. Uh, one time only special land use approval, is that how I word that? Um, expiring April first, twenty twenty-four? Twenty-four, sorry. Twenty foot high containers?
Eighty feet long.
Eight, eighty feet long, all items of number five met, is that the only other one I have on here? Which is the berm, so the trees, Monday through Friday, eight to five, only, eight weeks finishing four one, twenty, twenty-five, am I missing anything?
Water, water.
Pretty much that whole list.
That's already been approved down here, water on, water on site.
Yes, that's already part of it.
That's already part of it, and everything else has already been met, so that's my motion.
Would maybe contingency if the noise is muffled by the containers, very have an issue with that, could we, uh, something else that we can do?
If the residents request the containers to be moved, feeling it would be quieter, then we can remove the containers and finish the project in the two months. Not that I, I don't think, just from my good feeling, I don't think that's.
So my, my only question with that is if, if there is, uh, some, uh, something brought to the board about a residence, does that mean that we have to stop, can we keep moving forward, because if we're putting this deadline on here, we're saying no problem, we'll be done by April first, but if we start from week one, that, you know, they complain that it's still too loud for them, then are we stuck, can we stop, can we have to extend the deadline, like, I, I'm not sure how that would work.
We can do that. What would you do with a deadline, but it's just the idea of trying to work with the neighbors.
I, I'm, one other side on board, we're trying to do whatever we can, and I would ask that if any resident in the neighborhood has an issue, our gates are wide open, our doors are wide open, come over, please talk to me, let's have a conversation, let's see what we can do to, to fix a problem versus dragging it out and coming here and having else that just takes more time.
The berm is going to require permitting, um, a site improvement permit, I don't know how soon you're going to get all this done. If you, if you're going to cut yourself off for an April one deadline to be completely finished and.
We already, I mean, we already pretty much have a berm back there, we just have to put some trees on it.
Okay, that's my only concern, is if there's any hangups here, because you can't start the operation until this is met. That's my only concern, and I really don't care.
And who are you? It was teasing.
Because just, there's certain things that we look at from the, it's the building department that issues this permit, that we normally would require a drawing, sketch, a bond, make sure the condition is met and meets, what Karen has put forth, there's an inspection. So we probably just want to make sure you have enough time to complete that and, and complete the job by, by the April one date. And I mean, we'll do everything we can.
Yeah, I mean, my whole goal is to try to get this done as early in the year as possible, right? I mean, it benefits everybody if we can do it in the winter time. So, I'm trying not to, to push this requested operation date out any further into, to the spring than necessary.
Gotcha.
So is your motion included or getting permitted, stuff like that?
Well, fees are.
I would meet all requirements except for that, right?
You don't need to plant trees, don't you?
It's a site improvement. Any improvements to the property, um, does require a bond.
Not for planting, for planting trees?
What if there are trees?
Anything that you require, and here what you require is an invoice from the contractor who will be doing the work.
Okay.
And based on the bottom line, this, uh, it's going to cost the applicant, there's a percentage that we charge for the bond. And if, I mean, in this case, Karen, if it's something that's not applicable, you just have to tell me.
I mean, that's what the building department does for.
Well, if it's a site improvement, any improvement to the property, that's what we do. They had a site improvement bond for what they did for the business. Concrete, any trees they planted, there was a bond charged for that. And we'll turn it around as quickly as he can get me the invoice, I can do the calculations, and we can issue the permit.
I'll work myself, and it doesn't cost anything, then.
Pardon me?
I said, what if I do all the work myself and it doesn't cost anything?
Then you do an invoice, and it costs you something to buy the materials.
Okay, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, you can, you can work it out, it'll, it'll work out, it always does.
Yeah.
You might read that again, too.
Sorry.
I'd make a motion to approve the special land use for Zia on services at ninety-four twenty-two Marine City Highway. As with the stipulations to include a copy of the licensing from the crusher that he hires. This is a one-time only, and it will have an expiration date. Twenty-foot-high containers, eighty feet long each. No, eight foot total, sorry about that. All items of number five met, which is the burn and the tree planting. Operation will run Monday through Friday, only eight to five. We're gonna allow eight weeks, project must be finished by four-one of twenty-twenty-five. If he re-convenes it again in the future, he'll come back and start all over again. So by April one, we done, set and done. Said something, you covered everything, is there anything anybody thinks they need to add?
Sounds like you've covered everything.
No, it seems like you've covered, you've covered five, but the ship, the burn, the timing.
That's my motion.
Most supportive? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion has passed.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Number two on our unfinished business is the renewable energy ordinance. Karen, would you listen to this one, please?
So, at the last meeting, um, I was directed to take a look at your current, um, solar ordinance and provide some suggested changes to make the workable ordinance. Um, your solar ordinance, um, you have small solar, medium, and large. And, um, the concern with what the state has, um, passed, that mostly affect your large solar energy system. Um, small and medium, the town, townships still have, um, authority over those, so, um, we can amend those as we like. Um, I did, um, update some language letting, um, clarifying that small, medium systems are systems that do not feed into, um, the, basically electrical grid, they're intended to serve, um, the property on site, whether that be a resident or business. And, um, also if someone is choosing to have some sort of battery storage system referred to them to whatever ordinance, to a separate ordinance, should, um, the planning permission decide to pass a separate battery storage ordinance. Um, so for your large solar energy systems, um, right now, they are a special land use in the ag district, B two, B one, recreational open space, and your OS district. And the industrial district, large solar energy system shall be a principal permitted use, subject to the standards of this section. And if you look on all the language in red, it's basically suggested additions to what you currently have in your solar energy ordinance. Everything that's black text is what you currently have. So this includes, um, having a setback. Um, my communities are, uh, proposing having a setback of around, you know, a couple hundred feet. They put it at two hundred feet. Um, you know, the planning commission wants to, um, you know, go free to suggest changes to that. Uh, ground-mounted solar energy facilities shall not exceed twenty feet. Um, twenty feet is the, basically the standard height for most of, we're on solar panels now. Uh, and canopole equipment used as part of the solar system shall be screened for review from any public street, resident district, or cultural district by use of waste and re-well, uh, directory representation of other screening. Um, some language about flare, to minimize it. Um, documentation. You know, documentation from, uh, including a drainage plan. Again, this is all the language that wasn't there before. Um, statement that it's going to operate within, uh, municipal state and federal departments requires. Uh, fire protection plan is a pretty big addition, and, um, and emergency response plan should some sort of disaster happen to this facility in order to ensure that there's, um, you know, a planned, you know, facility hot fire or something like that. And also a decommissioning plan to ensure that, um, if this is ever removed, um, the land will be brought back to an equal or better state than it was before it was developed. Then again, also counting for battery storage. Um, so just language look over to the side, or help the planning to make a decision on what route they would like to go. And then I've also included a separate battery energy, um, storage system, and this is language that was provided from U of M, on what they suggest communities, uh, sample which on what they would, may should think about in an adapt, um, for battery storage.
You said that's in our package as well?
In the package as well.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Again, Casco hasn't, uh, made a decision on what they'd like to do yet. Um, all developers at this point can go to the state and go through a process there. Um, Casco has the option to adopt a compatible renewable energy ordinance, which follows exactly what the state is requiring. Um, you can choose to not adopt a federal ordinance and just defer all applicants to go directly to the state. Township is not allowed to be involved in this review process. Or, um, this language here is if the township wants to consider a workable ordinance where, you're either maintaining some of what you have, including additional language to maybe provide protection to your residents, should a developer choose to go the local permitting route. But at this point in time, all developers have the option to go directly to the state.
So even if we put policies in, they can go off and discharge it to the state, I know even if we have policies set?
They can choose to look at your regulations and decide that they'll just go to the state, or they can choose to apply here, and if they're not happy with the outcome of that review process, they can just go to the state.
Whatever's cheaper for them, I'm sure.
So of the three choices, which are adding the Creo, not more workable ordinance? And I know it's not, money doesn't always matter, but which one pays the most to the township if it does happen?
The Creo.
The Creo pays the most?
Well, from, so from what I've read of language, it says communities are eligible for five thousand dollars per.
Forget what they're reading.
Middle of hour. And I, that language is so much different than, um, it says you're eligible for this thing, and I would assume it's automatic. But I don't know, all communities, no matter what you do, if you, um, if a one of these developments, um, comes to your community, um, there is a two thousand dollar permit O I.
That's irregardless.
It's a one-time, it's a, it's one-time payment to the community. It says if you're eligible for this five thousand dollar one, and I'm assuming it's automatic, but, um, to be honest, I'll, I'd have to look at the state language.
What do you mean by one time instead of?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a one-time fee, it's not something that the township looks at annually or anything.
It's a one-time fee. Oh, I thought it was as produced energy you get the most per.
I think it's whatever the anticipated nameplate.
Of course.
Energy capacity it will generate.
And then which, if you were a company coming in, which one of those three is most appealing? Would say.
To the company.
Are they, to the company, are they gonna say, well, look, you know, I have a workable ordinance, I think we're gonna go there first? Because that's gonna be the easiest for us, or is somebody with Creo easier? Isn't there like a mentality as to what they would rather work with?
I mean, I, I guess if, in theory, if it's a Creo, they, that's what they would buy anywhere. They would, they're, if they decide to go to state route, that's, those are the stipulations that they would love. So in theory, if it's a Creo, it's following state stipulations or even less. So in theory, Creo would be easiest for them to work with. But at the same time, I, I believe the feedback from most local communities is that the Creo does not offer the protections that they would like to see for adjacent properties, so.
So workable ordinance offers that?
Or it's office. Now, that, and again, just because you have a workable, they could give a look at it and decide that it's safe as well. But, um, again, this is something that, it's all new territory for all communities, so everyone's trying to figure out what's best for them.
And in Casco, is most of our land that's desirable for this seems to be consumer power property? So would they not, in my opinion, like, I would think they're gonna have all these townships and stuff, they're not, they're gonna just go to the state on all? It would seem. Because they're such a vague, it'd be like DTE or consumer, they're just gonna low bias and go to the state anyways? If they really want to do it.
So if they go to the state, do they have to still follow any of these policies that we, that we wrote in here?
Well, so, so that language in red, some of it is language that was, is essentially part of the Creo, but some of it is also not. They're more, it's more restricted language. Um, so, I mean, so are they gonna be followed? Some of the language that you have in there, sure, because some of that language is.
Same as the state.
The, is the same as the state. But I think the big concerns communities have are, you know, right now, the Creo language is the sill, the perimeter fencing of the facility can be as close as three hundred feet to the outside wall of a residential property. That's probably a lot closer than a lot of people like. It's not even a property, you know, it's, you know, a lot of people are talking about setbacks. How far is this property from their own property boundary? Um, you know, right, so, you know, that's one thing I think makes a lot of communities nervous. Um, you know, could affect the buildability of the surrounding parcels or, you know, something a lot of properties are concerned about. Um, the value of what those properties would be. So, that's, that's a major concern. Right now, China's working on a workable ordinance. Um, very, last time I talked to your township attorney, they have said that very few of their clients have adopted a Creo. A lot of communities are opting to just defer to the state.
You know, I'd like to take Dean on the last page, make that, uh, three strokes, twenty feet high trees.
Can we say anything on this? Can?
We, uh, we do have an opportunity for citizen comments after, uh, or closer to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't care, I think a lot of this language is good for us to review as, as a board and really kind of try to understand this the best we can before we make a decision whether or not to, you know, adopt a more restricted ordinance, or if we think that we should defer to the state like some of our neighbors have done.
What neighbors have done, that'd be a good question.
It's not like you said China was.
China's doing, China's doing a workable. Um.
This is what you would consider a workable ordinance, like an ordinance that, that we kind of come up with.
And this is just a, a starting point, but they still, I mean, as of now, um, now that I'm looking at this, since I submitted it to you, I, I probably would surprise a few things and add even more stuff.
Because we can, I can hear it's two hundred feet from a property line. But I'm, I don't even, I haven't, I just, how many feet is it? Is there any place in there that says how many feet from residents? Off of that two hundred feet? Because technically, if our setback for a building is fifty feet, that could be two hundred and fifty feet from a house, which is not.
Two hundred feet from an adjacent property, so residential.
And then if your house is fifty foot off the line, you're two fifty from a house. I'd like to see maybe something two hundred from a property line and an additional hundred and fifty from a house. I don't know even if that much matters, but something bigger than two fifty.
And this is kind of where the balance is, are you making your order, your workable ordinance even less attractive or less workable? Um, so that, that's the, the balance that, um, we're trying to strike. How to do it, because they have to look at the Creo, the setback, yeah, I think it's like fifty feet from the right of way from, but yeah, from a, it's like just three hundred feet from the outer wall of a building. Um, so, you know, if you really, if you could be very close to your property line, and even if the adjacent property feels like they have some distance, you know, it might not be comfortable.
I feel like something needs to be put out to us, I don't want to refer to the state. Yeah. I have a feeling you're discussing.
Even if, I mean, it's ultimately, they can go around us, but there's no sense laying down. Just because they can walk around it, right?
I agree, I mean, I think at least try to get a, a workable ordinance on books that is appealing enough to them where they'll try to work within the ordinance versus going around us. And I think that's kind of to your point, right? We gotta try to balance it where we get some of the things that we want, and we don't make it so restrictive that they just say, no, we're not even, it's too restrictive, we're going around it every time.
To follow it.
Right, right.
Because if they wanted, nothing's gonna really stop them from doing it.
Like I said, I, I think this is a good starting point. Karen, if you have some more information or more verbiage that you want to add to, to strengthen this a little bit more, um, and provide that to us, I think as a board, we can study what you've already provided and continue to work towards, uh, hopefully getting something together that would satisfy a workable ordinance.
Can we include in our workable ordinance that we receive the five thousand minimum that they're gonna give to the ground? They're gonna, or, and I'd be curious to know how much that money is. I mean, money, in the end, if you're gonna get it, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know. Are we talking, oh, this one's a thousand dollars, and that one's a quarter of a million, half a million? I, I don't know with these, I don't even know what's sold or it never, I'd be curious, just. just curious what those numbers are. Like if they're saying a one-time 5,000, maybe it's kilowatt, how many kilowatts is one and on an average 100 acre piece of property, how much money is that? Just curious. I'll look into it, I'm curious.
Send that property to.
Yeah, just based on.
Is there, is there any requirement for these companies by the state to, uh, for like emergency response plans? You know, if the solar panel, whatever these things are made out of, if these things light on fire and our fire trucks are carrying water, but water doesn't put it out, are they required to help the fire department?
I believe they're required to bring, and they're required to bring an assessment to make sure that the capacity needed to take this out is there.
Okay.
What about like an insurance contract cleanup that they need to decide?
There is, so I, I believe in the states, there's a, there's some kind of a financial guarantee that is left that, you know, should, if we have ended, the cleanup is done and that gets assessed, maybe like, I don't know if it's on an annual or three-year basis, but it can get updated and whatever, if the cost changes, that also will change.
Well, like I said, I think unless anybody else has anything, let's, let's study what Karen's already provided and Karen said that she will, will strengthen this a little bit and let's, let's keep working towards.
A workable ordinance.
A workable ordinance and gather the information that we need to create a workable ordinance that would be desirable to a developer, but also protect the township in, in ways that we can without making it too restrictive. Okay. Anybody else have anything on renewable energy?
No chance of it changing yet. We've got any changes that we had, is there any chance it could change?
Um, no, the consensus is at least not for the next two years.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move into, at this time, we'll move into new business. The first item on the new business is a home occupation review, uh, for Mr. Lawrence Grainger Jr. Bring this up for us, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Uh, why don't you start off by telling us who you are and what your intention is?
My name is Lawrence Grainger, live over on 3963 G Street Road. Um, we are just proposing to use the backyard like we have countless years to go and take apart our small equipment for our company and, uh, just to go and take and run the business out, but we're not so involved in it. We've been doing this for 10, 15 years now. We've had, uh, you know, compliance with all the township supervisors through time and had agreements with them all and for some reason, we just won't do this.
Okay, I understand. Uh, Karen, I would ask for your review.
Sure. Um, so the applicant is proposing, um, home occupation at the resident central road. On this is a permanent use in the Arlen suburban residential district. The business would be a contractor service, which includes space for administrative purposes as well as storage of, um, our company vehicles and equipment. Um, so in the review, um, the applicant provided a description of the proposed use. The applicant's home occupation would be the parking and storage of company vehicles and equipment. Um, the applicant provided a sketch that includes, um, the current home and barn as well as a proposed farm. The current home is 1,800 square feet and the existing barn is 600 square feet and the proposed farm would be 1,800 square feet. Um, each square feet of the home is used for business purposes and the existing barn is used for company storage. And when the planning commission reviews home occupations, the following standards define, the home occupation shall take place completely within closed, within closed buildings. The applicant stated spaces, uh, space used for business purposes of the home and existing farm. Um, and in my review, I said the applicant needs to confirm if any outside areas are used for business purposes as the application states, less than 20% of 2 acres are used for parking and equipment, trucks and trailers. Should be noted that in section 66, um, off street parking, um, a single commercial vehicle not exceeding a licensed gross vehicle weight rating of 26,000 pounds, semi truck, uh, truck tractor may be parked, uh, in the existing Ar, um, in, or the, um, Arlen district. Or, yeah, Arlen district. Um, subject to the following requirements, subject to be two acres, the standard is met, a commercial vehicle, um, must be operated by the applicant of the residential dwelling, assuming, um, you're the license holder of that vehicle. Uh, commercial vehicles exceeding a gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds shall be parked in the side or rear yard at a distance, uh, greater than 100 feet from the principal building of any neighboring residence. Uh, no commercial trailers or semi-trailers may be parked in any residential district and no instance shall commercial vehicles be parked within an existing right-of-way or public residence. Um, the home occupation has to be incidental to the residential use and for the home, the home occupation can exceed 30% of the gross core area, the standard is met. Um, the area of any accessory building devoted to home occupation shall not exceed an area equal to the ground floor of the principal dwelling. Uh, the applicant stated that the existing barn is used for company storage. Uh, the applicant should confirm what, what the purpose of the proposed barn is, if that is for additional company storage or if that would be for, uh, personal use. Uh, no air-coach service shall be sold, offered for sale on the premises other than those incidental to the personal services offered by the home occupation. The applicant's only proposing this for business use.
Karen, can I stop you there for a quick second?
Sure.
Uh, number three, the one you just read, area of accessory building devoted to home occupation self, shall not exceed the equal to the ground floor area of the principal dwelling. So the house is 1,800 square foot, his proposed, proposed barn is 1,800 square foot. Is that, I mean, does he have to essentially make that smaller though, that so that it's not equal? If it's used for the business?
If it's used for the business, then everything, in theory, yes, that proposed barn could be used for the business, but then that 600 square foot barn can't, that would be, that could be personal. So just defining a.
So in, in total, between the two barns, he has to be 1,800 square foot or less? If they're both, if, if that space is used for the business?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the home occupation shall not require internal or external alteration to the construction features, equipment, machinery that are not compatible with the district which is located. Um, the standard is met. Um, there shall not be any employees, employee other than family members residing in the principal residence. The applicant wants to confirm that the standard is met. Um, he's allowing sign, but no signs are currently proposed. Uh, the occupation shall not be detrimental to the surrounding uses and overall character of the district which is located. The applicant should confirm the standard is met. In no storage or disposal of hazardous substances shall occur as a result of the proposed. Home occupation are not customarily contained in the residential area. The applicant should confirm how this is meant. So it's just, these questions will need to be answered tonight.
Mr. Grainger, have you received a copy of, of Karen's review?
Yeah.
I have this.
Well, I didn't have that. Well, yeah, okay.
What exactly do you use?
We do a.
So I mean, you.
What equipment do you have?
What, what's that?
What equipment do you have?
We have, uh, 160 excavators, which is mid-size 15-ton machine. We've got a, uh, six-ton middle excavator, mini excavator, um, skidster. Um, we did have one triaxle truck that has been sold. Um, so we've got one trailer, tan and forty-ton, that's going to be either used again come spring or later on in the year when we do repurchase another vehicle. Um, or we're going to just want to take it rid of that and just go back to our semi-deep and mobile. Um, other than that, we just have, um, two tag trailers and, um, other than that, a bunch of handles.
So you, you're mentioning your equipment list and you mentioned a mobile boy, a semi, a trailer, a tag trailer. Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, letter D, no commercial trailers or semi-trails may be parked in any residential district, so he can have a truck there, but he can't bring the trailer there as well? That's what that means?
See, over, over the past 15 years, during all this and having the agreements with, you know, supervisors, um, we can park somebody there, we can park trailers there, the trailer's old, which, this is the part that makes absolutely zero sense, is that you can have a trailer, but it has to be either A parked off-site or it has to be parked inside of a building, outside, which makes no sense because now you got to break down, hook up, break down, hook up, spend a lot of time. Um, and if you got to park it off-site, there's added cost to another car, so like, why would I even do this if I got to do that? And we've always done, we've always got them parked out back behind the barn and, uh, really never had a problem with anything up to now. So the only real reasoning of the proposed new barn is to go and take apart the trailer still. And that's really about it. Because the equipment, nine times out of 10, are always on the job site, um, other than the skidster and the little mini excavator. Um, the big stuff's always pretty much on-site, so it, the only time that we come back to the yard is like this time of year, if we don't have job that is going for spring, right away, or, um, it needs to be repaired. And if it needs to be repaired, it's usually back at the house for about, I don't know, week, depending on how long it takes to get parts. This year though, we've had, uh, we've had the big diggers sitting there because we, number one, we don't have a job for it right away in the spring, plus it needs repairs. And then I have got some medical issues that have been going on, we got into a wreck back in December, so we haven't had time for the ability to get out there and work on it. Other words, it would be already done, fixed and it would be shut back out the door to some job item.
So if you had a truck and a trailer hooked, you couldn't get them both in, in that barn that you're proposing?
I could get the trailer, but soon as I clean it.
Too long.
It, it, with the leak and the, and the, uh, tractor, and if you go and take and put the mobile boy in there at the same time, impossible. I could only do truck, well, truck, yeah, actually sit out, so it's just a leak. So either I have to leave or I have to bolt in that barn, there's one of the dudes that's not taking long.
Just a question for you, so if you back the trailer up in there, give the whole belt and just leave the truck outside, what's the difference?
That's what we've been doing and we've never had a problem with it. But right now, we got to clean up the barn, it's a little dirty, so it's accumulated a few things. Um, so yeah, that part I don't have a problem, um, cause that's what we've done over the years. And then, uh, we got rid of the sunlight, thinking that, okay, we'll be more economical, we just do the triaxle and, uh, you know, that trailer.
Right.
Um, but that found out, that wasn't that good either. So, um, that's why we got rid of the dump and took them up and back to the summer.
I have an additional drawing that Dan doesn't have, I don't know what the rest of the board members have. It's in very last page of your packet, okay?
It should be one that's rough drawn and there should be the finished drawing.
Do you have another page after that, one of your hand jobs?
No.
You have a rough drawing.
Apparently I know, but I got this one here.
I have that one.
That would be the rough one.
Yeah, we have the rough one.
No, no. I have this one, which is not the same.
Oh, no, I don't have that.
And if I flip back two pages, I have to wonder what we have, or if we have.
Yeah, we don't have the last page. So how are the differences between the two?
Well, there's no difference really between the two, it's just the finished drawing that cleaned up a whole bunch and.
Well, the reason I, the reason, what, what brought this to my attention is in this, let's call it thirty drawing, your proposed building is forty by sixty, which is 2,400 square feet, but in the new cleaned up drawing, your proposed building is thirty by sixty, which gets you that 1,800. So I just.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that was a, that, that was not part of the formal application.
Right.
That rough, when you were, you were proposing possibilities and then a couple.
Right, yeah, we just did the rough drawing, if everybody might know what was going to go on and if it was going to be feasible and.
So disregard this one, you'll focus on this.
He can build a building, a bigger building, just have part of it as home, right? And so if he has an 800-foot section that is home, he's already got a 1,600-foot building that is used, that would still work, correct?
Well, so the, he, whatever building he's using for the business can't exceed the purpose for area of the home.
For the business, right? But I, I set aside whatever, my lawn chairs, all my.
His lawn chair's meeting the accessory building's ordinance and it's that the building is for personal residential use.
That's just an idea.
So what you're saying is, if, if he built this thirty by sixty, he's got an existing 600 square foot barn, if he built this thirty by sixty, only 12 of the 1,800 square feet could be used for the business?
If he's.
Right, then, um, like if he continues to use that 600 square foot barn, he moved everything over to the new barn.
Or he, everything into one bar for the business and everything, personal use in, in the other building or something to that picture.
Well, you could build a four or five thousand square foot building.
Right.
And just use 1,800.
One area of the rest is for your house.
Right.
Is there a difference between special land use and home occupation?
So home occupation is not, it's, it's a review that the planning commission has authority over, it's not necessarily a site plan and it's not a special land use.
So this is not a special land usage, which is what's indicated on the affidavit, is it? Is he applying for special land use?
There may have been some confusion in industry really on why was, what, what was required.
Okay.
But, um, it's, it's, he, he turned in the correct.
To home occupation.
Documentation for the home occupation.
To home occupation.
Yes.
So because it's home occupation, similar to when we go back to the prior special land use that we were discussing, some of these things cannot be, like that number D, we cannot deviate from that.
No, the planning commission can not.
Cannot deviate from that, is the question. Thank you.
And which one's that?
That was allowing the trailers parked outside. So I do have one other question, how long has the business been?
Fifteen years.
Have there ever been residential complaints, which is neighboring, immediate neighbors and the local neighbors?
Not the one where?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I did, I got.
But no. Is that?
So if this, if this commercial trailer's parked inside, it's okay?
And item D says no commercial trailers or semi-trails may be parked in any residential district.
It doesn't matter where it is. It doesn't matter where it's parked, it doesn't matter, it, it's inside a barn, doesn't matter.
So that's not about the future.
Uh, see, that, that kind of bits of everything that we've been doing for the last 15 years been approved with, you know, the supervisors, with the agreement that we had. Basically, you know, they have told you specifically, once you keep it, I'll back, or if you park them in the barn, they're outside.
I know, but unfortunately, unfortunately, the verbal agreements that you kind of previous supervisors, we can't hold, uphold them or enforce them.
Exactly, which is why we're here now.
Exactly, and, and it's, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, I really do, but I can't, I can't say, well, don't worry about these bad things because Rumen Appleton is okay, you know, I, you know what I mean?
What was the complaint?
Well, I don't know that this is the appropriate, uh, form, because I believe, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there will be letters sent to neighboring property owners within 300 feet of Mr. Grainger's property, at which time they would be able to appear for public comment. Is that correct, Karen? For home occupation, letters are sent.
Did you, did you send them?
No, no.
So this is just a preliminary review?
Yeah, this is just, yeah.
So we're not even approving that tonight? So we're not even approving this, are we, for cross-decision documents?
No, we didn't send letters yet because we have to confirm the red markings, you know, you can't...
I mean, my little thing is, if I can't park the trailers inside the barn, then there's really no sense in doing any of this because I'm not gonna go and take, pay, just go park them over in another lot, ten, fifteen, twenty miles away, that's absolutely zero sense.
Right, so here's, here's what I can tell you, if there is a, is, if there's a letter or number in this ordinance, this section eighty-four home occupation regulations, that you don't think you can meet, the next step for you would be the ZBA, go in front of the ZBA, and they can grant variances to the ordinance, correct? So you go to the ZBA, you ask them for a variance in ordinance, if they say, if they approve it, then we can, we don't have to, basically, we, we can ignore that.
Your, that's not my problem, John, I don't have money anymore, I, I'm, I'm a pro-away man.
I get it.
Right now, I can't afford to keep my lights on, and if you don't take and, and have to jump through these hoops and pay more money, it just can't happen. I mean, I, I've got, uh, I'm tapped out, and the township knows it, and everybody around me knows it, so, I mean, if, uh, you know, I, I, I'm trying to work with everybody, you know, just unfortunately, I got neighbors that are, excuse my language, assholes. I have one of them, and he's been a pain in my ass since day one he moved in, and I've been through courts with him, and I've won, I've beat him, and he's pissed, and he wants buildings, he wants me to get out of the business, is what he wants. But unless somebody else can go and take and afford to pay my bills and do my work, then, you know, that's not gonna happen. Um, and there should be no reasoning why everybody in this township does the same shit, and I can't do it, then we got a huge problem. And I'm not trying to be a dick, but I gotta be able to do my livelihood just as well as you guys, see, I'm in this court. And if I can't do my livelihood, then who, who's paying my bills?
Like I said, Mr. Greger, I, I fully understand, I, I was in your shoes a half an hour ago, I get, I mean, I, I understand what it's like to have to jump through the hoops and, and meet, meet the, the, uh, regulations in the ordinance.
And it's sad that we have to do this.
Well, I mean, it's, but it's, nothing else that keeps a lame, level playing field, right? Because if I gotta do it, you gotta do it, everybody's gotta do it, and, and, you know, that's just the way that the ordinances are, I mean, I, I can't, I can't, this board can't take your sa, your case and say, well, Mr. Greger's tapped out, he doesn't have money to, to go in front of the ZBA, so we'll just ignore the rules and we'll let him, we, we can't do that, you understand how that goes.
And I understand all that, but I mean, at the same time, we should be able to come up with something with, with this board and I, to come to some kind of agreement that'll satisfy these people to go and keep their mom shut, leave me alone. I don't need going through with anybody else's P S. I, I, I love my news, do my, do my stuff, everybody can leave me alone, I leave them alone, I always have, and just do my life. And, you know, if we can go and take and, and have this, let, trailers can be parked in the barn, so we get, and that's what I do.
That's what I was, was, you know, working on explaining to you, is the, the only way to do that, because I can't, this board cannot just ignore one item in a list of items that need to be met, list of standards that need to be met. But there is, there is an option to get, to get through that, and that's the ZBA, you know?
And possibly do the ZBA as well.
Five, I believe it's five hundred.
Yep, so, thank you guys, have a good night, I can't afford it. You know, I don't know what you guys want me to do, I gotta, like I say, asshole neighbors, I gotta deal with every fucking day, excuse my language, and I'm sick and tired of it, I've tried my best to go and take and play by the rules and work with everybody, but when you got people like that, there's nothing you can do. And you, and you want me to spend another five hundred dollars that I don't have to go and take and pacify those sons of bitches?
Not Larry, not Larry, and I'm gonna swear to God.
I'm sorry, John.
I get it, we're, we're gonna be fair with you, but we're not first hand, you know?
And I'm not, I'm not just, John, I'm just really fed up.
I get it, I understand that, but we have to follow a standard that we apply to everybody that comes in front of this board.
But I can't afford this.
Well, what do you want?
I can't do it, I mean, you know, if, if somebody wants to go and take and say, hey, you know, here, here's a payment plan, fine, maybe I can do that. But I can't, I, John, I don't have five hundred to go in front of the ZBA.
And I understand it, I get it, I mean, I'm understanding, I truly understand where you're coming from. But at the end of the day, there's nothing that one of us up here can do, I can't bend the rules because it, because you are not, and you don't have the financial means to go in front of the ZBA, that's the process.
But at the beginning of this whole thing, if, I wouldn't want me, you guys all sat here and said, okay, we're gonna work with you, we'll, we'll work, we want you to get this done. I would not waste it my three hundred dollars or three hundred fifty dollars or whatever, plus, knowing that I would get to go in front of them for five hundred bucks.
I'm gonna go get the schedule, so I'm not misquoting, but I believe it's five hundred.
Okay, thank you for that.
So, I mean, you know, it's unfortunate, yes, but, you know, at the same time, I just, I don't know what I'm gonna do then, because my, my equipment has to be parked there, and if we wanna go to court and go round and round and round, and you guys wanna sue me for it, then I guess that's what's gonna happen, I don't want it to be that way, but you know what? You guys have a competent supervisor around here that has no record on my property, and now he's a building inspector from what I understand? I don't even know how that would work, because there's a court order that that boy cannot be within two hundred feet of me. So I don't know how that would work.
We could, we could easily make arrangements with other building inspectors and neighboring townships, I mean, there's, there's, there's a solution to every problem, there. Some, some of those solutions cost money, and I get it, it sucks when you gotta pay money that you don't necessarily have. But I, there, there's nothing else that we can do as a board, we can't approve your request when you don't meet the minimum standards.
I mean, I'm meeting all the standards, it's just that I don't have the money to go and take and go in front of the ZBA.
The fee for the, uh, ZBA is five hundred and fifty dollars. If a planner needs to do any type of a review, uh, it's an additional two hundred dollars.
And all the rest of it?
And then, well, there's three costs that might be applicable, and if, uh, extension of a special meeting is required, that's an additional two hundred. But generally, from my experience, uh, it's generally the five hundred.
So we're basically looking at it, Karen.
Do you have anything that might make this situation easier for Mr. Greger?
I can't either. Are you having else?
I mean, if I was to be able to do this, to go in front of the ZBA, how long would it take before I would have to have money?
The difference with the ZBA too, if I'm not mistaken, because I was, did work with the ZBA in another city-type thing, they can approve, they cannot approve, if I'm not, I could be wrong on this here, they can't give, uh, zoning variance based on your... Just to say, I see, okay.
It's typically based on, uh, it's, uh, practical difficulty, and it's usually based off of a unique situation.
Hardship.
Based, because of the property, something, something physically unique like the property that's preventing you from being able to do what you would like.
Yeah, personal hardship is not, I don't want to put somebody, I want you to review that, if you do decide to go there, oh, before you go there, review that.
There's no guarantee.
Because that's not a guarantee either, and I just don't want somebody to spend all money, and they get there, and I found people in that situation. Hardship, they're lying, they can't cross, and they can't cross it based on hardship.
And it just happened, they just denied an applicant, in October, they didn't, they couldn't give him the variance that he was requesting.
Yeah, but he actually, actually made the building bigger, said smaller.
Right, but still, he was, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee.
What, the next boardship is, uh, meeting is, or the ZBA meeting is, uh...
It's in April.
It's in April, the next ZBA meeting is in April.
Is it special land use, like, does it have that same stipulation of a special land use?
For what?
For that same section, that same number, where you, if you have special land use on the property, is that same no commercial trailers or semi-trails making part of a residential?
Well, it's, so...
District, can you give a special land use in a residential district?
Well, it depends what the use is, it's a home occupation, which is its own, it's a, it's, it's allowing someone to run a business out of a residential district, and in matter that the township uses would be unattainable to, um, the, you know, the...
So special, so special land use wouldn't be a rock he could take?
No, special land use is not a rock.
I just thought I was looking...
There, there are permitted special land uses in each district, home occupation is a permitted in a residential district.
I just thought maybe it didn't have that stipulation.
You've got to be able to property park that trailer and truck.
You've had to get a commercial property, you're only limited to what the stipulation said in section sixty-six for commercial trailers, and without having all that documented detail, it was, you know, I wasn't really sure what was possible for this property, so it just depends on what he has, and if, uh, that trailer wasn't there.
See, I, I don't understand because, I mean, one time you guys say, oh yeah, just park it in the barn, then again, now you're saying, no, you can't have it, period, I'm not wrong. I mean, which way is it, I mean, we gotta come to an agreement on this somewhere, somehow. I mean, this wording in here, it's so contradictory, it's, it, it says one thing and then it says another. And I'm, and like I said, I'm going by the supervisors that I've always dealt with and had relationships with, and they've always said, the ordinance is, as long as it's in the barn or outside, you're good. So I'm going by that, and now you guys are telling me that this thing says, oh no, you can't have it nowhere at all. So now you want me to go get another piece of property or rent a place, John, can I have a place for you, chief? You wanna park that over there, you'd be the most fun. So I mean, uh, not to be an idiot or anything, but I'm just saying, you know, but why do I need to go and take and do this and go somewhere ten, twelve, fifteen miles away and go hook up to my trailer and then take off when I can get the truck and everything, sit at the house? And, and I can have it sitting outside? I mean, honestly, does that make any sense to you guys?
There's that place on thirty-two in Palms, that, that guy had to go through and fence it all and stuff, he's got spots in there.
Well, I just plan to fence mine off.
I know, but I'm not talking about renting, I'm gonna throw your trailers in there.
But you're agreeing, not worth it, not worth it, charging.
I don't know what it's charging, right, you can always ask them, right, I mean, I don't have to tell them.
I don't care if it's ten dollars, I can afford it. And, you know, and I understand where you guys are coming from, but I wish you guys, somebody would come across and start understanding where I'm coming from. Because, you know, it, it makes no sense to spend money that I already have, and you guys knowing that this ordinance said that you cannot have a trailer, nor a property, so I just took three hundred bucks and just threw it out the window, that I could not afford.
Well, in all fairness, I, I think you've been providing these ordinances multiple times, right? Not to mention they are public knowledge, they're on the website, I mean, you, you gotta do a lot of due diligence on your own too, to read the ordinances and, and understand.
I understand, John, but I go by what I'm told. And, and I'm going with the supervisor of the township, I mean, how much higher are you willing to go? I guess I don't need to go in front of you guys and that with ZBA and, and all these other stuffs.
The supervisor, and with all due respect, Mr. Greger, is not the, uh, deciding authority of the township, this board is.
And I'm saying that, that this is...
So you were supposed, those people who told you those things were speaking in error.
Well, Karen's speaking in error, Bill's speaking in error, Joe's speaking in error.
They were, they were speaking in error.
And, you know, this should've been, this should've been taken care of years ago. But, you know, I'm going by what the supervisor of the township is and what we agreed on. It's unfortunate that I have neighbors that are being... But move down just a little side, you guys satisfy everybody.
That's right.
And, you know, planning comes down to pennies a cent, and if I can't do it, I can't do it, and it's unfortunate. Two years ago, yeah, I was a, okay, yeah, there is, how much more do you want?
Well, here's what I can tell you, you have Karen's review, you have all the, the items in red that need to be met for us to give you an approval.
Well, I mean, everything with the trailers.
Oh, I mean...
As far as I can see, that's, that's the whole thing, that's all, I, I comply with everything with the trailer part.
Everything else she shows she met.
I mean, the office is inside the house in a eight by ten room, so that's eighty square feet of the house, and then the barn, if we wanna choose to put up a barn, because now what we're talking, if I gotta park trailers offsite, I don't even need to put, put a barn up. I can park them all back. As long as, long as my trucks are titled to me and me only, and that, in fact, you play, I don't even need this, because I have trucks, and if I put trucks in my name and they're under twenty-six thousand pounds, I don't need this line of money.
Is there a trailer currently parked there now?
I've got three trailers parked there, personal trailer, I got, I got a couple of personal trailers, I have one equipment trailer, and then that's it.
But the commercial, the commercial, was it a mobile that they said, or a triax?
In the case, yeah, there was a mobile there, and, and then we had a, uh, triax leak for the sun.
Which one is there now?
Right now, we've got a tandem trailer, um...
Yeah, but I don't care about your personal trailer.
No, no, this is, this is company, I got the forty pound tag trailer, um, which is parked right there, and if you don't look, if you look the wrong way, you miss it. Um, and then I've got two other trailers, um, one double trailer, and then I got, uh, one personal trailer, and, um, well, actually, two personal trailers, two personal trailers, because there's one trailer. Um, and then I've got the, um, box truck that sits there, which most of the time sits out on the job, but we had to bring that back because we didn't have a job for it.
So is that, have you been non-conforming according to this, are you being, currently being fined, currently, oh, what is currently?
Well, he has been receiving letters from our ordinance enforcement officer, yes, because he has been in mound compliance for several years, and, uh...
Brendan, that's, that's several years, please go forward exactly.
Okay, well, I'll go with however much time you feel you've been in.
The last, this has been just the last five, six months with that guy, and he's got a court order not giving him a round fee with that two hundred feet.
Well, um...
And I don't even think he realizes it, but, um, I've had conversations with Joe, Joe was at, point on what, whatever your personal stuff gave me on this.
Karen, can, uh, I need to make one thing clear, in, in the ordinance, it says, number two, a single commercial vehicle not exceeding a licensed gross vehicle weight of twenty-six thousand pounds or a semi-truck tractor may be parked on a parcel, but to me, this key word is "single commercial", so is he also in violation if he has more than one commercial truck on the property?
Uh, uh, yeah, it's commercially plated, I'd say yes.
So I mean, if you wanna get into the technicalities, right now, there is a commercial truck sitting there.
Yeah, there's none that's commercially plated.
Yeah, there isn't anything over there that's over twenty-six thousand pounds plated. Like I said, I sold my triax, because we need the money, so we sold that, so that's gone. The other truck that was there was parked, so he got a title for it, Joe knows that, and I believe you, I told you too.
Yeah, I know you said he was working on it.
Yep, he's got that title now, so it's over at this place, so that's not even there, so those, those are, right now, not even an issue. Like I said, everything that, that's in right here, I'm complying with, I'm, I'm hustling the twenty percent that's required at max, I guess, so, I mean, I'm at, I'm gonna give it roughly fifteen percent of my property that's gonna be used to go and take and park stuff back. And according to what I've reading and what you guys are reading, I don't need to put up a barn. I can take that box truck and, and, uh, I don't know, because here's, here again, there's another that's twenty-two with everybody in this township, everybody's got cargo trailers, and they got them, and there ain't nothing being done, and there's no, the, and the ordinance is, you can't have it, period. But yet, down the way yet, there's three places that's got them, nobody's saying anything, and I bring it to everybody's attention, down Church Road, there's another ten, fifteen of them.
Well, you can't assume that nothing's being done because...
I know there's not nothing being done, John, because for some reason is, they've been sitting there for over a year, still sitting.
I know, but you've been operating on your property for over a year too, right?
Uh, been operating for fifteen years.
Right, so my point exactly, just because something's been there for more than a year doesn't mean that they're not getting letters, they're not getting dressed for, from the ordinance guy.
I don't know.
I know, we're not, we're not here to speculate everyone else's level of, of, of how deep they are in their own conduct performance, right? We need to, to stick to the facts of what you're trying to do and, and where do we go from here, and, and... Regardless of, of the, these items that we need to confirm has been met, we still need to table this to next month for a public hearing, right?
Right, or, well, it's not a public hearing. It's a, like, from the sub-residents or given their mail something. And if they want to make comments, they would do that during the general comment period because it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, what, what, I mean, we're having, so if people come in to go and take and voice their opinion, so that would be a public.
Well, it's not, they, they have the ability to make a comment during the general public period if they would like. But it's not a, it's not a public hearing for this property.
Well, as far as I can tell, within three hundred foot of, I don't know how you guys want to put it, three hundred feet of where the equipment is? Or three hundred feet from the property? Because everybody that I've talked to around me, except one person. Well, I haven't talked to you, Ben, but I already know what your concern is. That's the only person that's got a problem. Everybody else has no problem. So, I mean, they commit, they commit, fine. If they don't, it'll be it.
Why are you pointing at me?
Because you're credit for it, you're just as big as you.
No.
Okay. Welcome.
Guys, guys.
Even if we have invited the neighbors, there isn't open, open meeting for the neighbors to approve. We still have to meet deep.
Let's meet the requirement first.
So that's.
Other than that, you're wasting everybody's time.
Yeah, and we're bringing them in again for something that.
What, what I would recommend, Larry, is to, what is the best way to?
Is there a legal way?
Send an email, send an email or revise a drawing to, to show how these standards are going to be met?
Provide a drawing or write a letter stating how, how the standards are met, which might include the vehicle details, so we actually understand what's on the site and how the standards are met.
So that would be my recommendation to you, Larry, is write an email or revise a drawing that shows how all of these red items that Karen identified, how all of those standards have been met. I think you mentioned it earlier, Joe said, give us, give us a list. I think that's a good idea. Give us a list of what trucks and trailers and equipment you plan to, to keep on the property and how.
Commercial.
Commercial, right. I don't care, I don't care about your residential stuff, I don't, you've got ten stolen trailers, I don't care. We need to make sure that the, the ordinance is met from a commercial standpoint. All of your equipment, trucks, trailers that you use to operate your business is what we're looking at in big home occupation review. So provide that information to Karen. She'll review it, she'll send that review to us so we can review it as well. And then we would invite you back to the next meeting so that we can review the information you give us and do the best we can to make it certain.
All right, that's fine, sir. And we'll set February all at the next meeting.
Next meeting is on the eighteenth February.
The eighteenth and that.
Yeah, perfect.
So letters won't go out until these red standards have been met, correct?
Absolutely, it's wasting time.
Now, as to licensing, do we have to have verification that the commercial vehicles are licensed in the applicant's name?
Well, commercial one, you're licensing both by and by company.
Correct. Let's just start with a list of commercial vehicles, trucks and trailers that you have in mind to keep the property.
Better in business name. Business, better in business.
Right. Well, right now, we don't have any trucks in the system because, like I said, sold one. And that was a home truck I had for a business. So, other than that was his, and that's his truck, which is now over somewhere else.
Everything's personally in his name, but they're commercial use because it's a single owner business.
So now, do you want me to?
Trucks and trailers are the issue.
But even, the standard that's written is even more than one truck is not compliant.
Okay.
It says a single commercial vehicle.
Okay, so now, do you want me to, do you want me to project what I'm going to have there?
No.
Okay, so just what I have sitting there now.
That's commercial. Okay, let me, let me be clear. If you own a bunch of stuff and you have it on a job site today, but that job site's tomorrow, you're going to bring back six trucks tomorrow? I, we want to know that. I mean, I'm not, you know, I've tried that to.
But what I'm trying to say, John, is that I'm projecting I will have either another truck or I will have some, and the lowboy, and I'll have a trailer. Now, do you want me to go and take and project them in?
If you currently own them, regardless of where they're parked right now, yes. Give us a list of what you currently own, regardless of where.
That's our land.
But what if, we, we do get the stuff? What, what, we'll, we'll just have another big, how do we again? And what are we going to do? Just come in here and say, oh, hey?
Well, I mean, let's take a look at your list and figure out how we can make it.
Want to shut it down.
Yeah, exactly. So let's, let's take a look at what you have and, and then see how it meets the ordinance. And, I mean, maybe we don't have to.
Okay, so I'm going to do this again.
Which trailer is the problem over there?
Unfortunately, the ordinance said, oh, no commercial vehicle, or commercial trailers, I'm sorry. The ordinance has written that states, no commercial trailers or semi-trailsers may be parked in any residential district.
So as, as a commercial trailer is one that are plated, commercial.
Right, and anything that's used for commercial purpose, right?
Hey, well, none of them are completely commercial at all.
Well, there's, there's only, a trailer plate's a trailer plate.
I'm a resident there, thank you.
Yeah, I think, but your, Mr. Greiner is the applicant.
A trailer is a trailer. If it's a commercial use trailer, it's a commercial use trailer. There's no differentiation in the plate. Like on a truck, you have a G W plate and then a resident, a regular plate. Trailers don't make differentiations on the plates.
But you said they're for commercially plated and a commercial business name.
No, I didn't say commercially plated, I said "commercial." It says, no commercial trailers. So, I mean, I don't think anybody can justify a forty-ton tag trailer is, is not for commercial purpose or use.
Um, that's, you can.
Actually, you can, but.
Um, I get what you're saying, John. So I'll do that, I'll make a, I'll make a list. I did that over to you guys and then we'll take it from there. You guys will do it and figure it out.
My one question is if the one semi-trailer that's in there is the issue and it gets removed, will all this just go away?
If it meets the standards, it meets the standards.
Well, that's just the one trailer that's there that's probably the issue. Is that one semi-trailer that's in there that we use for storage?
There wasn't a specific, I don't, trailer or truck that was mentioned.
The trailer that's.
So this is just the ordinance that I was saying.
Is the forty-ton tag or the dump tag.
If you have, you have a forty-ton tag or you have a dump trailer, a quad axle or a triaxle lead or you have a lowboy, those are all commercial trailers that are, are what is intended in this ordinance to, to identify.
All right, we'll list them all, you know, up here.
List of the equipment, the trucks and the trailers and answer all the questions in red and then we'll review.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, sir.
We'll see you guys next month.
Okay. Okay, the next item, uh.
I gotta ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be able to turn this around? He doesn't get, when do we see, he had to submit the stuff to me to get it to you in time to be present in February?
So the, the mailings have to go out, um, fifteen days prior?
Right, but you're not.
You're not, but you're not going to get it. He's got to meet your standards before we can send the letters out, right?
Right, I mean, if he writes us a letter, then the letter satisfies the standards and we can move forward.
Right, but I have to have it thirty days before your February meeting. What's the date of your February meeting?
Eighteenth.
All right, he's passed the date?
What's the thirty?
Yeah, but we can still kind of prove, well, we can't prove that the thing.
You don't, not making a notice in the paper. This is already started, this application's already started. It's not a brand new application.
No, I understand that.
Right.
But we changed the rule from fifteen days before the planning commission meeting to thirty days before. So you would have enough time to do your review. If he brings it to me a week before you have the meeting, I'm going to turn it around for four days. You want me just to accept it when he brings it to me? He doesn't understand, I don't think.
But if.
You think he can have that by the end of the week?
I may, I may have it. So by the end of the week, good?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And he'll need twelve copies, please.
Twelve copies?
Yeah, twelve sets, yes.
What if we email it though?
I can make the copies. If he emails it to me, I'll make the copies.
So by the end of the week, he can email to you?
If he could.
Make sure.
That gives us enough time to turn it around.
All right, I'll make sure of that.
All right, thanks, I.
Since this is on the table, that was something I wanted to ask you for when we had somebody over there. Because I didn't think it was specific either, because I was very confused. If somebody comes Michigan being very seasonal and building and everything is timely, very, much more timely than in a state that's just all on tech. If you have to have thirty days, once they're already, I don't think it's clear in our writing that once they're already on the agenda and they have to come back like this gentleman, the return, can't there be a stipulation that that could be a fifteen day? Because there is no time to turn around from meeting to meeting, and we're writing into that today. And then now they could be pushed back two months, which in Michigan can really make a huge difference in also completing for bond reasons and all other kinds of reasons.
Well, the ordinance is thirty days.
Right, is that what it says? Does it say, I'm not, I'm just curious, does it say anything given to you or just initial? And can we override that at any point in time?
I mean, Karen can look up the language specifically, but if it's, if it's in depth, I.
Right, if it's major, I'm just talking if it's something like, he's like this, he's got to send it to you.
And I will share with you that Joe Stevens made arrangements for Sheriff to be here tonight. And for whatever reason, they did not show up.
Why is that?
Oh, because I set the alarm off in my house before I got here.
Oh.
I mean, do you find out the gist of his temperament?
Uh, do we know for certain he didn't show up, he didn't enter the door and it was locked and he said, oh, okay?
It's not, I mean, the door's open, I went several times.
Yeah, okay.
But do we have the right to override that if we ever choose to for a return, is my.
Well, I will talk Karen and let her know, this is when I got it, I'll be good or argue now. But generally, the thirty-day rule has been working very well.
So if somebody doesn't get something complete and they have to bring back even a single piece of paper?
That's different.
Okay, then, then we can override. We could say.
I talked.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I talked, Karen.
I just want to know what's legally allowed from what person, but that's like, what constitutes.
Generally, it's a full site plan review. Because you're going to have another one coming out. Uh, it's the thirty-day rule.
And then I do have, while I'm, while we're talking, Karen, I was going to ask this question to get this clear. I'm very confused on the number two. As you were questioning, does that mean if I'm going to have a single residential use? And I have two box trucks, maybe, I don't know, I'm not in construction or anything. I have two box trucks, that is a single box truck only or two box trucks?
Single.
A single one, so he's already got more vehicles.
There's, there, well, I'm just going to put this out there. This is one of those, this is one of those ordinances that needs to be reviewed because some of this stuff just doesn't make sense. And, and here's a perfect example. A single commercial vehicle not exceeding a licensed gross vehicle weight rating of twenty-six thousand pounds or a semi-truck tractor. So I can have a semi-truck that's rated for a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. But if it's not a semi, it can only be up to twenty-six thousand pounds, it doesn't.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense either, I was reading over that, a lot of that doesn't.
And it means you're going to have one.
But it does say a single commercial vehicle.
Or tractor.
Well, that is a semi-truck tractor.
What is a semi-truck?
That's the part you drive on a semi.
Not including the back end?
Correct. Just like any other, I mean, you could have a dump truck that holds a trailer.
But if you have two dump trucks in residential or in any of these districts, it's not allowed, only one?
That's what this says.
We know he has multiple, so that's, I'm, okay, I just need to, I'm confused.
No, there must be rules agricultural and residential.
No, he's, he's resident.
He's residential, but it doesn't make.
Well, that's another thing that I don't, maybe Karen, you can shed some light on this. If I'm in the ag zone and I have four semi-trucks that I haul my ag corn with.
You're not.
Then that's different because it's not home occupation.
It's a different.
Well, it wouldn't be home occupation. If you're, if you're running a farm operation.
Totally different.
Then that's a permitted use in the ag district.
What about, what about the guy, there's a guy on thirty-one in County Line who runs a trucking company with probably six or seven trucks that all have trailers that operate out of his property. And that's, if I don't have them happen here, but I'm almost certain it's not industrial. So it's got to be the residential or ag.
He's, I think he's.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's an ag district though.
But the trucking he's doing is not, doesn't, is not. Yeah.
But if he's, but if he's doing it out of agriculture, it doesn't fall under this rule.
But he's, so that's what he's, he's. But he's not, it's a fact, it's an ag operation, because I know it's not. I mean, it's, it's not all day long, it's.
Right.
Under ag.
I mean, he runs heavy haul, he's got lowboys and bulldozers, that's not, I mean.
Because under ag, you would.
The guy at Starville Advisory that runs the landscape, he's got five trailers and trucks in his property. Would that make a difference? Would that be against?
No, because with ag, you would come for a special use permit, you would come from a home occupation permit. He's residential, he has to get home occupation, is that correct?
He's residential, yeah, he is, it's.
He's in a residential district, he has to get home occupation.
Right.
If he's, if he's ag, he would come, and you want to resign to a trucking company and you're ag, you would come for special use. So you'd follow a different route.
Oh, I want to word it like that. If, if, like, for instance, in the ag district, farming is a permitted use in that district. Ag is still residential, but I was, you know, whatever the situation is, if someone has a vehicle that would become used for agricultural purposes, I'm not sure if this would necessarily apply, but, you know, for the home occupation, you know, the section sixty-six is off street parking. And so it says you can park one commercial vehicle not exceeding this, you know, gross weight so long as it meets these stipulations. And so we have to verify.
That's a problem around the lowland.
Well, the bigger problem is single use because there's a lot of people that, that I could, you know, another one is, um, Piper's Inn. St. Mary Highway. He's in a residential district, his house is in the front and he's running a ten-truck commercial underground utility company out of that. And there's no way, he's got well over one single truck and I know he's got builders. So it's just, it's, I don't know why all these guys are allowed to and, and.
Some aren't.
And, and why this particular situation has been identified is.
Well, he's had many neighbors complaints, I know of them, yes.
Okay, let's move on, we got a lot of other things to do. Uh, number two on the agenda for tonight is the election of the planning commission officers. Um, the, the first, first position to be elected would be the chairperson. Uh, Karen, I've never done this before, I wasn't part of this last time, so is there?
So someone makes a nomination, and I can check.
I second that.
Okay, and then we go.
Well, then, if anyone wants something, if there's a nomination, they can, and if not, then you guys will go ahead.
Okay. Anybody else have any interest or would like to be nominated?
Only if you accept it.
I'll accept it. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, let's, we'll, we'll vote on the chairperson. I, John Sarpone, have been nominated, I accept the nomination. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, Carrie. Uh, the vice chairperson.
I'll do that.
I'll nominate Mike for that. Uh, we have any other nominations or, or anybody else that's interested in taking that role? Okay, let's vote on Mike being the chairperson, all in favor.
We all support.
Seven second. Uh, Susan.
I'll say it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for Mike to be the chairperson, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Carrie. Okay, secretary. Would you like to do that again, sir?
I have to.
Anybody else want, anybody else want to ask for a nomination? All right, I guess you have to.
Because I'm a teenager, I don't know.
All right, I have no problem.
All right, so I have a nomination of Dan Hill, we have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Dan Hill as secretary, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Carrie. And our representative to the Z B A. Is that Ben New Jim?
Yeah.
It's Ben New Jim.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Jim to be the representative of the zoning board of appeals, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Carrie. All opposed? Carrie. Excellent, thank you. Uh, next thing is to set the twenty twenty-five meeting dates, times and locations. Tonight, we do have the list in our packets. I will go ahead and read off these dates.
If somebody could just, if you got a calendar, just double check my, my dates if you would. We did double check.
I, I was throwing them earlier. They're all Tuesdays?
They're all Tuesdays.
All right.
I mean, they're Tuesday. I don't know what Tuesday was.
Oh, that's what we need to make sure that the.
All right.
Oh, April, my shit. Nope, forget it.
The second, the second Tuesday is a regular for me.
Yeah.
And I had a little bit of this over the weekend, so that makes sense.
Perfect. All right, so we will, we will schedule the planning commission meetings for twenty twenty-five on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and for next year, January twentieth, twenty twenty-six. All meetings will be held on second, these second Tuesdays of each month at seven P M.
Wrong.
I'm sorry, third.
I meant the second.
You wrote it on the.
I wrote it wrong.
I'm sorry. All of these meetings, as previously listed, will be held on the third Tuesday at seven P M at the Thompson Hall located at forty-five twelve Melton Road, Casco, Michigan, forty-eight oh six four.
Good job.
I get a second to dates.
Second.
So a motion and a second for this twenty twenty-five meeting dates. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie. Excellent. Uh, next thing on the list would be report from committees. Uh.
Hasn't been, it hasn't been. Yeah, we had, we had a meeting last Tuesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, I see. And really, there's nothing to, we did elections too, but Sandy Fisher, uh, resigning from the board.
Okay.
Sandy's, uh, Rollins, uh, for, yes.
Do they have a notified form backfiller?
Uh, not yet. I don't know what Joe's done. Has he got somebody? Do you know?
I believe that Mr. Kubaki, he was here in the place of Mr. Uwalt.
Okay.
And he was the alternate, so I believe he'll.
Oh, yeah, he'll take the spot. That's right.
Chris Kubaki.
Will they get another alternate then? They'll have another alternate?
I think he'll have four points on one.
The planning doesn't have an alternate though, right?
No, planning doesn't have an alternate.
But we got seven, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything from the board, Julie?
No, I do have one thing. I was on Casco's Facebook page today and there's a lady in our community named Marion Bradshaw. That was pretty nice. She put out a post that she was making extra things of soup today because it was cold and offering it to anybody that maybe didn't have a home cooked meal. And I thought that that was very, very neighborly and very nice and helpful of us. So I just wanted to say her name in case anybody hears it and knows her. I thought that was very nice.
That was very nice.
It was very cold out there.
It was. And there's some people didn't, weren't able to get out or whatever, but she was willing to do it.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the planner's update. Carrie?
I have no additional items to add.
I get a question. Are we going to change your five-year plan to show that area is heavy industrial or light industrial, whatever it is? But it's got to be one of them. I've never seen just industrial before.
I work in communities where they just have industrial.
Do they?
They do.
So what, does our report say it's got to be heavy industrial or light industrial? Because if it does, then we need to change our, our five-year thing.
We'll have to table it down.
Yeah.
The ordinance, from what I've read, the ordinance does not specifically state heavy industrial, a requirement for heavy industrial or light industrial. From, from, correct, the ordinance.
So I've talked to Joe and Bill and all those guys. I was always, they always told me when we looked at it, it's heavy industrial. They said, right, in. But that's what they said.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. If any of these fine gentlemen left or Brenda. Mr. Renterout, I've been waiting very.
Since I went in the store, since you're going to work on supposedly a workable zoning ordinance as the renewable energy, but part of your discussion was site air setbacks. If you could drive around the state and see where there's existing solar facilities, you go up I ninety-four at the ISB, there's a solar facility. There's houses close by. It's probably not two hundred feet and it's not two hundred feet on I ninety-four. If you go to the west side of the state, my son lives in St. Joe's in Calhoun County. There's several new solar facilities built on part land right adjacent to the right of way. That's for I ninety-four. They're not two hundred.
Doesn't mean it's right though. I can make a habit of it, but it doesn't mean it's right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so if those facilities were approved by the local municipality
Okay.
and there's no fire suppression system in there and other municipalities start saying you have to be two hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred feet from your property line, those municipalities are probably going to head up to court and the energy companies are going to say there should be some uniformity. And if you have these extraordinary requirements of fire suppression requirements, the judge in the exercise of fiscal expression is probably going to say, because I've been on both sides of the fence, ask the municipal representation and property representation, that they're going to say to those municipalities that your ordinances are unreasonable and you can't enforce it against both the energy companies. And that's like from the beginning of solar towers.
But I think those companies, they actually need to the ZBA and get, and get a variance if that's what they got problems, right?
Right, then that's what I.
They don't have to go and take us to court or do anything else. They can follow our rules and do that.
And they can ask for variance and if you're turned down for variance request, then you can go to court.
Then you go.
Or they can go right around to the state if they don't like what we have, but at least citizens in Casco know that we.
Yeah, try it.
Right.
You know, that we're not just looking at old man's buck coming into town.
And the ZBA likely will give them like leniency on one item and maybe they'll meet our, our wishes on five. Maybe there's six items we don't agree on. Maybe we win on five and we lose on one. Who knows?
U of M is keeping a spreadsheet of recently past solar ordinance developments and what the stipulations were for those communities. And I think I saw an average setback of maybe like eighty feet uh, for a lot of them. That according to me, with, with what other communities wanted, they feel that is not enough. But there is, there are sorts out there where you can see what developments, um, have been built or are they, what do they look like? And what were the stipulations that they follow? Um, there's a spreadsheet listing what is in those communities or in incident, if anyone's curious. There's, and anyone wants to look up this stuff, it's the Graham Institute from U of M and they're keeping track of all these things. Um, but there are, there are samples, but then again, you know, um, every community has to decide what they think is going to work best for them.
Yeah, and U of M has a program to go energy efficient in the next ten years. And our home has so much open space, so obviously there then I can have two hundred foot setbacks and residences in the property to do it. So, thank you. There's two sides of the story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other citizen comments?
Just want to mention that there are four ordinance changes that you're going to need to consider in the upcoming months, right Karen? That are really, we are contradicting on a regular basis. Not you, so much as the office and the building department.
Well, there's some that are confusing. It's better to get on a third up now than to be sitting in front of the community, kind of like on this one where we're all kind of like.
What to do?
You know, it's like, a lot of things can be read to different ways, but it's better to have a clear mind.
Right, right.
Any other comments from the commission? Without any other comments from the commission, I will move for an adjournment. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Think of voting to adjourn in round eighteen?
I'll second.
A motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, next week, next one, next one.
Way in your way.
Hey, I like you better. I ain't got really much to leave.